This meeting is called at order. Please stand for the invitation. It's going to be led by Coach, Principal, Deacon, Mr. Iron Heckman. He's the Principal of the Freshman Academy, also a Deacon of First Baptist Church. Appreciate you being here, then we're going to do the pledge of allegiance.
Mr. President, Father, we just come to you today just thanking you for who you are and the blessing that you have put on this country and this city. And we just thank you for your son and what he's done for us. We want to lift up this council and our mayor and just thank you for godly leaders that you have put in place. Lord, nobody is in a position of leadership without it being ordained by you. So, we just pray for their protection, for their wisdom, for their discernment, and we thank you for a city that still honors you in prayer and the pledge and the Ten Commandments and the things that you stand for, Lord. So, just have your way today in this meeting and bless these council men and women and just have your wisdom imparted on them. We ask these things in Jesus' name. Amen.
Will the clerk please call roll?
Councilmember Dodson.
Here.
Councilmember Nealon.
Here.
Councilmember Petty.
Here.
Councilmember Sparkman.
Here.
Councilmember Swain.
Here.
Councilmember Wood.
Here.
Do you have a copy of the minutes from last month's regular meeting on July 22nd? Are there any corrections? If not, you're taking a motion to approve the minute, says written.
Motion to approve.
Aye.
Motion is second. Call in favor of the motion.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion. Next item on the agenda is a resolution regarding fixed asset disposal. I'll ask the clerk to please read the resolution.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Bemjern, Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled, "Resolution to Authorize the Mayor and City Clerk to Remove and Dispose of Certain Fixed Assets from the City of Bemjern's Fixed Asset Inventory by Seal, Bid, Auction, or Other Methods Authorized Under the Law and for Other Purposes." Whereas the City of Bemjern has certain fixed assets on its fixed asset inventory list which are obsolete and/or beyond repair and are no longer cost-effective so as to no longer be needed by the city. And whereas after an inventory of fixed assets, it is therefore recommended by our state auditor that said items or items be removed from the city's fixed asset inventory and disposed of by sealed, bid, auction, or as others authorized under ICA 1454-302. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of Bemjern, Arkansas, that Section 1, the mayor and city clerk are hereby authorized to remove the following asset or assets from the fixed asset inventory and to dispose of same by sealed, bid, auction, or other such methods authorized under the law. Department, Fire Department, amount $2,910.60. Description of inventory, Scotchman Ice Maker, serial number 09061320015851. Model number B330P. Control number FD1362.
Any questions, any discussion? Chief, got anything to add?
Just no ice maker, if I can ask.
Motion is second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Councilmember Dodson. Councilmember Swain.
Aye.
Councilmember Wood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sparkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Nealon.
Aye.
Councilmember Petty.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Therefore declare the resolution number... 08-01-2019 has passed. Next item on the agenda is a resolution to consider the final payment for the Valley Forge Drainage Improvement Project. I'll ask the clerk to please read the resolutions.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Bemjern, Arkansas, a resolution to be entitled, "Resolution of Approving the Final Payment for the Valley Forge Drainage Improvement Project and For Other Purposes." Whereas Hopkins Water Engineers Incorporated acting as the construction manager for the City of Bemjern, Arkansas advertised for bids for drainage improvements within the city. And whereas the City Council approved the mayor entering into a construction contract with Goodwin and Goodwin Incorporated in the amount not to exceed $347,181 by resolution number 0901-2018. And whereas the city's final payment scheduled decreased the total amount of the contract by $51,024.10. Now therefore be resolved by the City Council of Bemjern, Arkansas, that Section 1, the City of Bemjern, Arkansas accepts and approves the total final payment of $120,454.49 to Goodwin and Goodwin Incorporated as set forth and attached hereto. Section 2, the mayor and city clerk are hereby authorized by the City Council for the City of Bemjern to pay all expenses relating to the Valley Forge Drainage Improvement Project and execute all documents necessary to effectuate said changes.
Is there any discussion, any questions? You know, before Larry, appreciate Larry being at the podium, but I just want to point out, this is a decrease.
It's great.
This is really good. Some great news. The second one that we've had recently...
It is, it is. And again, I'm glad to answer any questions, but I think the mayor described it, this was a drainage project in the area of Hidden Valley and Valley Forge in Bemjern and the Mount Vista area. Turned out to be a really good project, cleaned up a real maintenance issue that the city had dealt with for quite some time. Again, some of the underruns and the reason that the cost comes in less is, one, there was less hard rock. It was the rock that was there was a little bit broken up. As well as there was not need to take down the adjacent property owners' tenants, and there are a couple of other underruns that resulted in the decrease in the contract amount. There is also a time extension with this project. There were some brands, some utility conflicts that were dealt with, some probably did take a little bit longer, but it's all contained under budget. So, we're looking at the project to get a chance to go by and take a look at it.
When did it rain?
Well, February to July. Yeah. But any...
Have you been out there and seen how it's running off? I used to live over there and I know that.
Yeah, it, I went by, I had to go by today, but last week after the rain, I went by late last week. The sod, the whole area was sodded, so the grass is well established. You know, if you didn't know, the project recently wrapped up. It looks like it's been there for a while because of the grass and a really good looking project. One of the major issues was a lot of rocks and that drainage, drainage, pretty steep, tend to flood the low water crossing or the crossing of Valley Forge to Hidden Valley. So, I'm sure they cleaned up that area a lot.
Some steep hills.
We have a motion.
Motion to approve. Second.
Motion is second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Councilmember Dodson. Councilmember Swain.
Aye.
Councilmember Wood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sparkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Nealon.
Aye.
Councilmember Petty.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Therefore declare the resolution number... Next item on the agenda is an ordinance prohibiting minors from possessing various types of nicotine products. I'll ask the clerk to please read the ordinance in its entirety.
Being enacted by the City Council of the City of Bemjern, Arkansas, an ordinance to be entitled, "An Ordinance prohibiting the Possession of Tobacco, Vapor, Alternative Nicotine, and E-Liquid Products or Implants by Minors, Defining Minor, Finding an Emergency, and Prescribing Other Matters Related thereto." Whereas the possession and use of tobacco, vapor products, alternative nicotine products, e-liquid products, and components and implements thereof by minors in the City of Bemjern have become widespread and rampant. And whereas the City Council for the City of Bemjern is concerned about the health effects of the prevalence of usage of such products on minors in the City of Bemjern. And whereas the City Council of the City of Bemjern finds that the increased use of these products by minors in the city has created a health hazard, and as such it is necessary for this ordinance to take effect immediately. Now therefore being ordained and enacted by the City Council of the City of Bemjern, Arkansas, that Section 1, it shall be unlawful for any minor to use or possess or to purchase or attempt to purchase tobacco in any form, cigarette papers, a vapor product, alternative nicotine product, e-liquid product, or any component of a vapor product or e-liquid product or cigarette papers within the city limits of the City of Bemjern. Section 2, any minor found to be using, possessing, purchasing, or attempting to purchase tobacco in any form, cigarette papers, a vapor product, alternative nicotine product, e-liquid product, or any component of a vapor product or e-liquid product or cigarette papers, shall be subject to a fine of not less than $100 and not more than $1,000. Section 3, that upon conviction, the district court judge may order the product or implement destroyed. Section 4, minor includes any person who is under the age of 21 years of age, except that minor does not include a person who is under 21 years of age if the person presents a military identification card establishing that he or she is a member of the United States Armed Forces or has attained 19 years of age as of December 31, 2019. Section 5, that this ordinance is intended to supplement and not conflict with Arkansas Code annotated, Section 5, 27 to 27. Section 6, the various provisions and parts of this ordinance are hereby declared to be severable, and if any section or part of this section or any provision or part of that provision herein is declared to be unconstitutional, inappropriate, or invalid by any court of competent jurisdiction, such holding shall not invalidate or affect the remainder of this ordinance, and to that extent, the provisions heretofore declared to be severable. Section 7, in order to protect the health, safety, and welfare of the minor citizens of Bemjern, Arkansas from the rampant use of cigarette products and the effects on its minor citizens' health, an emergency is hereby declared to exist, and this ordinance shall take full force and effect upon its passage. Section 8, all ordinances and resolutions that pass thereof in conflict therewith are hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict.
Do we have a motion to suspend the rules and go to a second reading?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. Call in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Therefore declare the motion carry and ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title for a second call.
An ordinance prohibiting the possession of tobacco, vapor, alternative nicotine, and e-liquid products or implements by minors, defining minor, finding an emergency, and prescribing other matters related thereto.
We have a motion to further suspend the rules and go to a third and final reading?
So moved.
Second.
Motion is second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Therefore declare the motion carry and ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title for a third and final reading.
An ordinance prohibiting the possession of tobacco, vapor, alternative nicotine, and e-liquid products or implements by minors, defining minor, finding an emergency, and prescribing other matters related thereto.
Now, we have some discussion here, some questions maybe that need to be answered. Our police chief's going to speak about it just a little bit, but I just want to read a little bit of something about the statistics and just to describe the vaping problem that we have among our youth right now, vaping e-cigarettes. It's a problem that needs to be addressed, and it has been addressed thanks to the Arkansas school superintendents, and the students really drove this policy change in the legislature this past General Assembly. And so, the legislation was passed, it was Act 580, 2019, and it really, one of the big issues is that it, the minimum age now to buy these tobacco products is 21 years old. Maybe a lot of people don't know that, I'm not sure. I've sort of asked some people just randomly around the city, and a lot of people didn't know that. So, one, I think that this, although we are just in many cases supporting the act that's already passed in the legislature, I think that it's good to, just to focus on this, put some, you know, just some light on the issue and to get the awareness out there to the public. Also, increasing this age, it's amazing, when you look at the stats, nine out of 10 cigarette smokers try smoking by the age of 18. And even though cigarette smoking is actually going down among high school students, the e-cigarettes and vaping is increasing. Then when you look in some of the stats about the Juul, have you heard of what the Juuls are, what it's, it's the number one brand of e-cigarettes? They look like a USB flash drive, a lot of them can sneak them into the schools. It's just become a problem. But they have such a high level of nicotine, which is incredibly addictive, but one single Juul pod contains as much nicotine as a pack of 20 cigarettes. And so, I've talked to the superintendent, Dr. Jeffcoat, about this. It's clearly an issue in our schools. It's, it's an issue that hasn't been fully studied yet either. The CDC just released some statistics, I think it was the first person to actually die. They just had a press release about the first person who died that was directly linked to e-cigarettes. So, a lot of, a lot of studies are still being done, but I just believe that this is an issue that we need to address, and so do the schools and many across Arkansas and across the country as well. Police Chief, Pam, do you have anything?
One way to find out what's going on with the youth is to ask the schools, and that's what we did. We met with, as it turns out, Mr. Heckman, who's, as you know, is the Principal of the Freshman Academy, also the Principal of the High School, others, about the, the usage of these vaping devices in our schools. And as it turns out, there was over 100 cases last year in our schools of times when students were caught using these devices, whether it be in the bathroom or locker room, wherever. There were 63 at the high school, sorry, 62 at the Freshman Academy, including at the hospital, so you can do the math, it's over 100. We also, it was in that we found out that the reason it's probably, one of the reasons why it's so rampant in our schools is that there's little, little consequence for doing it, for doing it at schools. The punishment currently, and even with the new law, is that the device is seized and then destroyed. That's, that's okay, but for the kids who borrow these devices or get them by other means or stop the black market, or whatever the case, whatever the case may be, they just will get it out of them. So, we determined then that we needed to change an ordinance or make an ordinance to where there would be a very consequence for, as you know, to be in possession of one of these things, and that's probably what we come up with this, this ordinance. I will say that the law mirrors the school board's policy wherein, whereas if you're caught with it, it's destroyed. There's also provision in the law that lends itself to this ordinance, where, and that is, if you're caught, if a minor is caught in possession of one of these devices while being charged with another offense, say shoplifting, and they're taken to jail or taken in front of the judge, and the judge can impose an additional fine or penalty, just like we have ordered here, but that's only in the case if the offender is already charged with something else. What we would like to do with this is, if a minor is in possession of one of these devices, to charge them and make them report to a judge and place the consequences as outlined in this ordinance.
Can you tell the difference between the Baker and the e-cigarette? Is there much difference in what they look like?
No. In fact, like the mayor said, they're maybe USBs, like USB device. I don't know much, not that much about them, just from what I've seen in stores, they're , they're marketed for kids. They look like toys. But if they want to, if they want to buy one and conceal it at the school or wherever, it's easy to do because they're so small.
And Chief, haven't we seen a significant increase in the number of seizures of these types of implements as opposed to years prior?
Yeah, like I mentioned, there was over 100 last year in our schools alone, and that's just the ones that we found. And it also lets us to schools, so, but just as a, as a gauge, that's what we used. If that's any indication of what it's like in the rest of the city, that's, as I said, it's a pretty good problem for us.
And we do intend for this to cross the line?
Oh, of course, yes, yes.
Does the Fire Department have any calls on, on people using these and just having some kind of bad side effects?
We, we've run calls. We can't, we can't link anything directly to that. We, and it may completely be off page, but we ran to the high school today with a kid that was unconscious, transported him, and I, I haven't found out if he was using, but there was no other reason, just everything else was fine, breathing fine, good heart rate. So, and, and I don't know that there's any correlation, but I was going to check, check later. They, they said completely unconscious, get to the hospital and start coming back around, answer questions, but just, just really no, no, no prior history of it either. So, I'm sure, I'm sure we do, but we don't really do much background. Once we get them, we do see, if you don't do our thing, when the ambulance gets there, we upload and we get them.
And this will be just a code violation? It's not candid in nature, is there a lawful misdemeanor or something, because our courts wouldn't have jurisdiction for that, but it is something that will give us a tool to use.
Okay, let's see, Chief. One question from the earlier draft of the ordinance to this one, I noticed a change in the definition of minor. Is that to more mirror the law?
So, Act 580 does include those exceptions, and so, I believe.
We just want to be clear.
Yeah.
And insist, and that's what I figured, but I just want to make sure.
I have one quick question. In Sections 1 and 2, they say the same thing with cigarette papers are mentioned twice. I didn't know if that was just ever done this year. They need to read that. They mentioned in the beginning and then...
What do you suggest we do?
I suggest that you pass the ordinance. I asked that you pass this ordinance, I thought that...
I'm not sure.
Are you sure then?
Sounds like...
The last one or the first?
The last one.
Can I ask a question? Mayor, when you catch the kids at school, are they, do you catch them because they were using in the bathroom, or are you able to see the device and say, oh, that's not a USB, that's a, that's not a jump drive, that's a e-cigarette?
Being in the restrooms, usually we get that information from another student, and we have to search them, and they're providing all kinds of devices to that.
So, we are going to leave...
Well, it's Section 1 and 2, and it just occurs twice in both sections, and we're deleting the second one, is that what we said?
Or, yeah, or, I don't know. I think maybe in the, I took that directly from the statute, so I may just have been referencing the implement, any component of cigarette papers, but I think it's fine to strike it.
Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve with correction.
Motion and second. Will the clerk please call roll?
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Councilmember Swain.
Aye.
Councilmember Wood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sparkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Nealon.
Aye.
Councilmember Petty.
Aye.
Okay, the eyes have it. Therefore declare the ordinance, which is number...
We have any questions?
We do have an emergency, do we have a motion to pass the emergency clause? Motion is second. Now will the clerk please call roll?
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Councilmember Swain.
Aye.
Councilmember Wood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sparkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Nealon.
Aye.
Councilmember Petty.
Aye.
Eyes have it. Therefore declare the ordinance in a vote. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance establishing standards for small wireless facilities. I want to hear this first. We'll read it first. I'll ask the clerk to please read the ordinance in its entirety.
I have a motion that the clerk read it by name and by title, and a copy will be available for anyone that would like to read it.
It's a really long...
We can actually read it, read it by the top, only three times.
It's that.
21 pages.
So, just to make it legal, we have a motion as second. All in favor of that motion?
Aye.
Aye.
So, will the clerk please read the ordinance by title?
An ordinance establishing standards for small wireless facilities within the City of Bemjern, Arkansas, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Do we have a motion to suspend the rules and go to a second reading? Move a motion in a second. All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? Eyes have it. Therefore declare the motion carry and ask the clerk to read the ordinance by title for the...
An ordinance establishing standards for small wireless facilities within the City of Bemjern, Arkansas, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
All, so we have another motion. Do we have a motion to further suspend the rules and go to a third and final reading?
So moved.
Do we have a motion in a second? All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Can we oppose? Eyes have it. Therefore declare the motion carry and ask the clerk...
I can read it secondhand and then you can have a request. No, go ahead.
Okay, we'll do it again.
An ordinance establishing standards for small wireless facilities within the City of Bemjern, Arkansas, declaring an emergency and for other purposes.
Okay. Now, that's clear. Let's make it even clearer. Mr. Bailey has done a lot of work on this ordinance and these regulations that again came from the Arkansas Legislature. Mr. Bailey's got a presentation here to help explain just the, the major details of this new law and explain who all he's been meeting with and discussing.
Thank you, Mayor. Good evening, City Council. I, as the mayor indicated, I've been working on this since my first day on the job, June 24th. Was actually having conversations and working on this a little bit when I was working across the river. We, this is something that's, has come down the pathway to us, and it's, and it's now on us, and I've been working for this date for that period of time. So, just quickly, I wanted to show you a presentation that we gave to the planning commission at their monthly meeting on August 6, 2019, and we discussed this and a draft of an ordinance and a possibility of moving to this point, and the planning commission, after listening to the presentation and discussing the Arkansas Act 999, voted to recommend that the City Council review and approve an ordinance creating strong regulations for small wireless facilities. So, quickly, what is a small cell? A small cell installation consists of small, low-power antennas and equipment that provide cell and data coverage to smaller geographic areas, supplementing the larger cell network and improving service for wireless customers. Small cells can be placed on structures such as street lights, the size of poles, the size of buildings, or on poles, including traffic signal poles. They're about the size of a pizza box. I didn't write that, somebody, this is somebody else's slide, but they're a little bit bigger than a pizza box, in my opinion. They are essential for transmitting data to and from wireless devices. This is something, if you've heard about 5G, read about 5G, this is going to be integral to the, and critical to the success of 5G. Again, small cell tech, and I've got a mixture of two different PowerPoints here, they came, some from the presentation to the Arkansas Municipal League, and some came to another presentation. This small cell, it can be, have speeds as fast, as much as 20 times faster than what you're experiencing now. I have personally experienced 5G, but those that have say it's unbelievable how fast it is. It's only, it's instantaneous. You can see on the right, the difference in the towers, next slide we'll talk about that, but there's better connectivity, less latency, and that box at the bottom about, some people view cities as a primary impediment, we'll talk more about that in a moment, but that up there where it says the next step forward, SG, that should have been a 5G. So, what is the difference between them and what you're going to see out there in the world? You have the macro cell versus the small cell. The macro cell is the tall towers, roughly 200-foot, monopoles, guide wires, lattice-type structures, anywhere from 200 feet or less, some or more, but that's, that's the one that covers the larger, greater areas. Then there's a small cell, and we'll see some photographs of those, I've got some in here in just a moment to show you, but this is small cell antennas typically only a few feet tall. They're also accompanied by an equipment cabinet about the size of a utility box or refrigerator, small refrigerator, but still about the size of a refrigerator. We got some photographs of those to show you. They do cover a much smaller geographical area. I've been told by an AT&amp;T representative, they covered area roughly 250 to 300 feet versus the others which may cover much, much larger areas. So, they are, but they're... So they are, but they're used a lot, and we'll cover it while we're talking about that. So what does it actually do? It's designed to offload the data from large cell phone towers and funnel the data directly to the service provider's fiber optic network. Instead of building additional macro towers, the company, the wireless providers are now wanting to do this to small cell facilities strategically placed in areas where high demand is anticipated or it exists to satisfy customer needs. If you're living in an area or you're working in an area where you're driving past an area where you're losing signal, these might go, might fit the need of the wireless providers and the need of the customer base as opposed to the more expensive taller towers. And that's what we're being told. The macro tower has a finite area capacity to be served if a high-demand area appears within the macro area capacity is directed to accommodate the users, which actually reduces the effective range of capacity. So why small cells? Small cell facilities can be used to increase the mobile broadband network capacity that present capacity and coverage challenges traditional wide-area macro networks as its coverage gaps created by buildings, tower siding difficulties, and challenging terrain. Sometimes they've had to locate big towers just to accommodate just one small hole. Before I left across the river, we worked on one around Carol Anne Cross Park. You may have heard about the flagpole designed tower that was put up over there. And that was because just in that little bowl of that area, signals weren't getting in there from the larger towers. They had to put another tower in there for that purpose. Otherwise, they might have been able to use something like this. The improved service capacity has many advantages, including economic competitiveness, such as a tech-friendly reputation, and more opportunities to deploy smart city. I think smart city, and I've heard from one consultant that contacted me about a year and a half ago, is that in his view and some of the reading he'd done on it, this might even be used at some point as a line in the streets with these, with the power, on the power poles, that might help to be sure a signal is provided to the smart cars. So that when we get behind, get a car that's not being driven by anybody, we can rest assured that the signal will always. I don't know if I'll even trust that or not. Given that, up to 80% of today's phone calls are, 911 calls are placed via wireless phones. A robust wireless networks are also critical of the public safety. So those are all the pluses for small cells. So what are the negatives of small cells? The aesthetics or the visual pollution. One of the things about the small cell ordinance through the FCC and through the Arkansas Legislature, the, what's happened, is that AT&amp;T and other wireless providers have, have worked toward getting their themselves considered as a utility. And as a utility, they can be placed in the public right-of-way, just, or public utilities, just like any other public utility. And because of that, we'll see some photographs of some of the things about these, about the small cell wireless facilities. But because of that, that's where the visual pollution could be an issue, driving down the streets or in other places. If you had multiple vendors, if you had, I don't know how many vendors, we actually have servicing Van Buren at present time, three, four, say we got five or six. And if they all wanted to go to certain spots, you might get a lot of poles or a lot of equipment located in one specific spot. And that could be, you know, a lot of stuff in one place, be very visually unappealing. Also, some of these may not be disguised properly so that they'll look very out of character for culturally distinct areas such as historic districts, or even some of our neighborhoods that have worked hard with, that have decorative poles. They have legacy hikes as one neighborhood that I, that I have seen since driving around town that has not only decorated streetlights, but it has decorative stop sign poles as well. And so, a big wooden pole with lots of equipment on it may not look very attractive. Then the, then the issue about being proposed in residential areas. This was an article, I think we put in your packet just more, that there have been articles written in municipal publications on city, city and town. There've been a lot of publications written about the issue of trying to balance the, the very positives of this thing for, you know, we have a robust industrial area and we want to keep it that way. If they need more space and more service, we want to make this available to them and also for commerce and for commercial areas. But at the same time, how do we balance that with citizens that may be complaining because something's been put in their neighborhood or in front of their house? So that's the balancing act, and that's what this article is, well, and some other articles have, have talked about. So, the Arkansas Municipal League had this presentation, Jason Carter, some of the slides from his presentation from this, again, was from Act 999 that the legislature passed this year, this past year. The FCC order contains some things that the Arkansas law does contain in it as well, such as the shot clocks, and we'll talk a little more about that, batched applications and fees. They did limit the, cut, you know, put a cap on fees, what they could be charged. There were, there was a lot, there were a lot of complaints from communities about the FCC regulation because they did circumvent local regulation and the ability of local jurisdictions to regulate in a way maybe that many didn't feel was correct. There was, there has been some litigation, but it's not really gone anywhere. Congress has tried to get involved in it. You know, it's, it's a, if you go through reading that, you know, it's, it's a party issue. One party tries to get it overturned, the other one's trying to get it to actually codify it into the FCC regulations. And the, and 10 municipal entities, including the Arkansas Municipal League, petitioned the FCC to reconsider its small cell orders. And as of yet, the FCC has not, they've acknowledged receipt of it, but they have not done anything. There are some fail-safe rules in the Arkansas Act, but if nothing is done, there are some basic things that will be done that, that, that the providers will still have to comply with, such as the height of the pole and about the compliance with the American Disability Act and interfering with traffic control equipment and complying with other codes and also complying with historic district requirements. But there are also things that are, that they won't have to do, and that's, that is something that we'll talk about in, in a moment. Primarily, it's about getting departments to come into the city and talking to us as far as before, and put some somewhere and start a discussion and a negotiation about a specific location. Aesthetics, we can regulate to some degree some aesthetics. Before regulating aesthetics, the local government must, one, have a planning commission, which we do. And secondly, we must create a small cell permitting process. The ordinance that you're being presented with this evening does have a permitting process in it. So, so that's, in order to have any regulations for any aesthetic requirements, we have to have those two things in place, the planning commission and the permitting process. The aesthetic standards cannot create, you know, they can't create such a strict guideline that, that acts like a moratorium or a prohibition. The standards must be reasonable, meaning they can't, must be technically feasible. And also must be, something else that's really unique about the act is that, you know, remember what I said at the beginning about that they have to be, that the wireless providers feel like they are a utility and because of that, they've been granted this ability to be located in rice ways. That paragraph B there says, no more burdensome than those on other utilities and communication infrastructure. So if whatever additional aesthetic requirements we place on wireless providers, we're also going to be looking, seeing if we're providing those same ones on AOG companies like OG&E, Arkansas Valley, something like that. So that's been a rub for some of, some has, they've drafted some ordinances. Also, we have to publish anything, any, any aesthetic requirements we have must be published at least 90 days prior to an application actually have been received. We can require things be put underground, we can require a lot of things, but again, we have to follow the rules of the, of the act. Permit application contents, the act does specify what we can ask for, the shot clocks. Again, that follows the Arkansas, excuse me, the FCC requirement of 60 days for co-locations and 90 days for new poles. There's other requirements there. The bottom bullet I want to draw attention to you is the batched applications. The Arkansas Act states that, that the wireless provider or providers can submit all of their applications at once, and we've got to respond to all of them within that period of time, either the 60 days, 90 days, or whatever. But also, there's a 10-day requirement. We've got to look at all of them in 10 days to verify that they're complete. So that's got to be done. So for Van Buren, that may not be a very big issue, even if we had four providers all getting together and say, we're going to just slam Wally at the city of Van Buren and bring in, you know, 20 at a time, you know, we may still not have that many. But if you were a city like Little Rock, that would be a big deal, a really big deal. As a matter of fact, Little Rock's actually added a staff person, you know, work on these particular applications, these issues. We can also require things like indemnification statements, insurance and bonding requirements. Some of these instances, insurance and bonding, we can only require those if we also require those of companies like OG&E, Arkansas Valley, AOG, et cetera. So, does everybody, everybody know what's important about September 1st, 2019? Other than it's being my 63rd birthday, y'all. No, but seriously, it's the Act 999 becomes effective. And we've got to get in the game. And when I say that, I mean, we, in order for us to have any ability to negotiate, discuss, work with the wireless providers, we need to have something in place by October, by September 1st. And which tonight is the wrong chance to do that. Unfortunately, that's not the way I like to work. I'm sorry that this is pushed on, on us all like the way it is, but it is what it is, unfortunately. So, but that is the deadline in the act. Even, even, even cities that had passed ordinances prior to the legislature doing what they did in this past session have got to go back and revise their existing ordinances by September 1st. And many of them have done that or are in the process of doing that. That's, of course, the act. The act, I thought the ordinance was long, the act was 25 pages long, and it was a lot of fun reading and rereading and reading and rereading, trying to understand it. So, some photographs. That's a picture from Little Rock, and that one doesn't look too bad. The antenna is actually up on top and the little round cylinder thing is up on top and the, if you can see the box there, that's, that one's not too bad. It's up high, it's not too obtrusive. That one, what caught my eye more than anything on this one was the size of that pole. It was a large diameter pole. Again, that was in Little Rock. This is one, and I mentioned, I think I mentioned this earlier, but one of the things that is in the act is that if they, if a wireless provider comes to the city of Van Buren and says, I want to locate on your streetlight pole, then we can't say no unless, we can say unless it is structurally unsound. And they, they cannot do anything there that would create a problem with the operation of the traffic signal. They can't do anything that would create a problem with the, someone moving up and down the sidewalk with an ADA issue. That, that is actually where they have co-located on a traffic signal in the city of Little Rock. That's a pretty good mess of pole. Oh, also, on a decorative poles or any kind of pole like that, the wireless provider does have the option of replacing your pole, or our pole, in this case, if they want to. And, and if it's a decorative pole, they have to try to meet it as close as possible, but still be structurally sound enough to do what we needed to do and also what they wanted to do. Again, that's another view of it. That's another one.
Quick question, break. So on that pole, that's just one provider, so if four providers, there'd be four of those on one pole?
There could be. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That is a, that's considered a decorative pole. It's not the most decorative picture I'm going to show you. That's a picture from Little Rock. I was told by somebody that this was a pole in a, in a historic area of Little Rock. I'm not sure that it is, but there's a better picture of it. I don't know if the world's leaning or the picture's leaning, but something's leaning there. That's off a little bit, but it is a fluted base. If you can see there at the bottom of it, it is a fluted base, but the pole is just a flat round. So, I Google, Google was the search engine I use, you can use number, just, there's one particular company that had came to see us while I was in Fort Smith about a year and a half ago, wanting to put up about two dozen wooden poles on Rogers Avenue and Midland Boulevard to get ready for this. And we had said no because the act didn't permit it to be done. So I Googled that company just to see what I could find, but also all these pictures popped up where installations that occurred in other parts of the United States. This was one of them. The box goes with the antennas. You see the antennas on the pole, pretty close to that residential structure. Somebody didn't like it, so they were trying to stop this. This was a, some photographs from a case where they started working on this in California, where without collaborative city input, small cells in Oakland, on the right, you see all the equipment on the pole. On the left, that's with collaborative city input, and it's, it's built into a streetlight pole. And again, it's very similar to that flagpole, flag, where a lot of confusion about what we did in, in, across the river there. But it's, all the equipment, everything's contained inside the pole, and the antenna is up there on top. There's another great co-location where they combined a lot of things together, and the antenna is there with streetlights and a traffic signal. Again, that's another picture where it's there. And some of these early ones, and I don't know if all of them have this, but some of them talk about the noise from the cooling fans. I don't know that the newer ones have the cooling fan issues. But here are just some more pictures of some of them that were down low and some big equipment. This is, that's what we're looking for, that's what we kind of like to see, is this, the standard Cobra head style light pole. You see the antennas are up on the top, but there's a box there in the middle, that's the second picture, the fourth picture, there are some, there's a little equipment box there. That doesn't look too bad at all. That's, 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 that's all I got.
In those, those pictures that's showed where there were, just looked like a mess on the pole, were those densely populated areas?
I don't know. I don't know. I mean, it's just, I just did, images, 500 popped up. But just to let you know, there are companies that are making decorative poles. There are companies that are making. He just wanted to watch the program, too. But there are companies such as Valmont that are making decorative poles that are being put in some communities. So just a basic wooden pole out there, the cheap wooden pole with, or ugly, don't have, it's not absolutely necessary that those, that those are installed. But you can see that, it's got a little bit of equipment there, partially up about six, eight feet up on the pole. It's got an LED streetlight on it, the antenna's up on the top, but there are companies that are making these, making those.
Who purchases those?
Huh?
Who purchases those? The city or the?
That would be a provider to, the wireless provider to do those, unless the city wanted to. I think so.
So if, if this, if this provider who's going to put up the device and they decide that that pole is not making, they can't put the weight of the device on there, they replace the pole or does the city?
They could, they could replace, they would be the one replacing it. Yes, sir. They have that option to do that. This is a wood pole, you see, it's hard to see there, but there's an oval there on the bottom, that's a lot of the cabinet and the equipment, and the antennas up on the top. This one, again, we've seen some of this already, there's different, the four different or five different kinds. The one that you haven't seen is the one on the far right, the strand mount, attachment to wires. In the act, that's referred to as a micro cell, small cell. Micro small, small cells will probably be installed by Concomunications. I've had conversations with them, some, several, about maybe a year ago or so, where they will be installing these really in line with their handling system. Those, that's, you probably won't even notice as an issue. Anyway, that's a big one. It's got, it does have the, but you see all, the big cabinet that's on the ground is all, everything's all built into that structure as well as a streetlight. These cabinets, all of them are going, you know, sometimes they're up on the, you've seen them up on the poles, but they're going to have to be, they're going to, some of them are going to be on the ground. One of the conversations we'll need to be sure and have with providers when they come in with a permit is when we look at these, is, especially those four cabinets, there may be four, you'd ask the question about how many might be on a pole. Unfortunately, there's not a picture showing how many are on this, but there's potential there with four cabinets, I could imagine there are four antennas on that pole with four different providers. Or it could be the same provider, they're just pointing in different directions. Because these, these antennas aren't necessarily like the other antennas where they can go 180 or 360 degrees, they may be directional as well.
Are there safety rules on these boxes to keep children from getting in trouble with them?
I don't know. I don't know. I'm sure they are. I'm sure they don't want anybody getting into these equipments, and it's probably because it's going to destroy their signal as well. But what we will be doing, for permitting wise, is that whenever we have this, this is where the new pole installation or it could be a co-location, but during that 60, 90-day period, we'll be asking other utilities, including our municipal utilities, to look at these applications to see, are they going to be interfering with valve boxes for water lines, manholes on top of a water line, on top of a sewer line? Or potentially, is it going to be too close to a street, it's going to create a side distance problem? Is it going to create an issue for a future sidewalk? If they, if this was closer to the streets and they got these out so far, then we'd never be able to put a sidewalk. If they, if this was closer to the streets and they got these out so far, then we'd never be able to put a sidewalk. So, that's part of our review process is to looking at not only the poles and where the poles go, but also this equipment. Applications on ground.
Can we, do we have to, Ryan, as a city, to limit the number of providers per pole?
No, we cannot. We, you know, only, the only way we could would be, we asked, is it structural we say. It's not creating a structural or a safety hazard. Things I pointed out earlier, it's structural, safety hazard, blocking a sidewalk, creating a problem with ADA, people being able to pass, or creating a problem with the traffic signal or something.
I was just thinking in terms of it being an aesthetic issue.
Yeah.
That we don't want that, so, you know, that kind of thing.
But they couldn't replace it with a black, you know, 100 foot pole in order to put more on it, there's going to be a limitation.
Yeah, there's a limit on the pole height.
Like a 50 feet.
50 feet, yeah.
So, only so, however many fit on that.
Yeah, and they could go a little taller than 50 feet, they can go 10% taller than a pole that's been there right away on September 1st, 2019. But one of the interesting things about that is that Van Buren, one thing I've noticed, we've got a lot of transmission towers. You cannot count transmission towers, transmission poles are specifically exempted from that height exemption. So, that's a good thing. And of course, that's a wood pole that's leaning and what it kind of looks like. And anyway, that's the, you know, the whole world was leaning one way or the other there. And then, as I was driving through Fort Smith a few weeks ago, I just saw that pole and thought it was a really funny picture. And it's been there for a long time, I thought I'd take a picture of it. Anyway, I can't believe living in that house and that pole. Anyway, that's it. And that's all for that presentation. So, we worked on this and I've had conversations and communications with two representatives from AT&amp;T, including their legal counsel. I've had conversations with other city attorneys. I've had conversations with other city planners. I reviewed sample ordinances and city ordinances from, I think, five, maybe six different ones, some that actually presented, some that weren't. The, I even stayed up one night and watched the Fayetteville City Council meeting, hoping there would be some interest in discussion there. It turned out it was, there was not that much there. But in the end, we have a, we were given a, I had an ordinance that was provided to me from an attorney in Northwest Arkansas that was a good sample ordinance. So, myself and Ms. Settle, the Van Buren city attorney, sat down, we read this ordinance through, and we made some changes to it that we felt were appropriate for the city of Van Buren and were in still compliance with the act. And that's what we have presented to you this evening. The ordinance does cover things such as the height. A lot of it is repetitious of what the act actually says, the 25 page act. But, you know, the height, the location and the design, what to do if there's abandonment or removal. Co-location, we have quite a good section here on co-location because that's what we really want to stress is that they will locate on existing power poles if they can and co-locate on, even on city poles or city facilities, or even on sides of buildings or on parking lot light poles, maybe stadium light poles. Came to that. We have a section on aesthetics. There's also an appeal process. The state act talked about the appeal process. We put that in the ordinance about the board of zoning adjustments and we hear appeals. There's, on the design itself, there were a number of things that we looked through, the good and the bad. You know, what other cities had done that was good, what folks like AT&amp;T had gone through and said that they were like or they didn't like. And we had the option of doing that. We have a horizontal spacing requirement of 300 feet for new poles. There is a term in here called, if you read it, it's camouflaging and stealth technology. Now, that's not making it look like a tree. But necessarily, but what I wanted to just point out that the definition for that is means as components and materials used in the construction of wireless communication facilities to make it compatible with the surrounding property. So, if the surrounding property has wood poles, then wood poles would be, would be compatible. But if the surrounding property had decorative poles, then decorative poles would be more compatible for them. That would be the camouflaging. Not trying to hide it necessarily, but trying to make it compatible to them with the surroundings. There's standards in here for locating on the existing structures or buildings. Signage, elimination, fencing, indemnification statement, the whole set of rules here on the permitting process and the application process. And on that point, with your approval of the ordinance this evening and out through the rest of this week, I will be trying to put together an application for co-location and for new structures so that if somebody does show up on September 3rd wanting or make a phone call to us, then we'll have an application for them, ready to submit. There are fees and rates, not only for the installation of, but also for if they want to co-locate on the city poles and what they would have to pay to us. There's the definitions, I think I mentioned this earlier, there are interesting definitions. You have to really read the definitions to know what a pole is. And what, again, a pole can include a traffic control signal light or a streetlight pole. Right away, not only means, we think of right away, we got to do it with the street right away, but it also means a public utility easement. And a public utility easement is sometimes run between houses, it sometimes runs between commercial buildings, it sometimes runs behind our buildings. So, all of those are fair game for the wireless providers. So, anyway, I hope I didn't take too much of your time, but that's kind of a quick run through of what we have. And again, the city attorney, Settle and I worked together on this. And if I can't answer a question, she can, she wants to add something more to what I had to say, so.
On the, the design and all that, on the new poles, it talks about the camouflaging on it and it's saying prefers, prefers, city prefers.
Yeah.
And then on existing poles, it sounds a little more concrete, like it's going to be this way, it's going to be concealed, it's going to, so, on the new poles, are, well, basically, are they going to be held to the same requirements as the others on the new ones as they would be on the existing poles? Because the new ones just kind of say prefers instead of.
Well, the reason, one of the reasons we said preferred is because it really, part of the act says that if we have any specific aesthetic requirements, they had to have been in place 90 days prior to the first application. We're not there, we didn't get there. So, all we can do at this point is just say, this is what we prefer. And that was a comment from one of the wireless providers on another city's ordinance. And so, we took that to heart. But as we continue to progress and if we work with neighborhoods or some commercial, we establish a commercial overlay district on the corridor, we're saying, this is how we want things to look on this corridor. We can add those in and say, you know, then once those are become law, then in 90 days following that, they have to follow that requirement as opposed to this. But as of right now, since we don't have any aesthetic standards in place. And some communities have already, but not because of this act, but had already put some things in place for their subdivisions. You say all subdivisions will have underground utilities. But, and so they were already way ahead of the game, didn't know it, they've been that way for years. We're not there and neither is the community across the river. We're just not there yet. We don't have that as a law. But if you had it as a law, we'd be ahead.
I think, you know, we're kind of in a difficult situation with the legislature. Basically, not giving as much opportunity to, you know, think on it. And this is a very complicated area. Obviously, it would be helpful if the municipality could kind of jump in there and give us, you know, kind of a baseline to work from. But since they didn't, Tom Kitclack, who's a former municipal attorney and who worked with Jason Carter, who was the presenting, presenter on this slides, the slides that he referenced. He basically took the ordinance that Jason Carter, who is an expert in that area, had drafted and then kind of tried to modify it a little more in some areas and tweak it in a way. And then we tweaked it from there. So, we feel like, you know, this is going to be a very litigious area. The whole entire statute is ripe with reasonable this and reasonable that, which is open to interpretation. So, you know, we're doing the very best we can with what we have and try to get the best people, you know, there are specialists in this area to give us the best place we can be. So, you know, all in just a bit of time, a time and effort and try to ensure very much so. And additions to the matter in trying to make sure that we have some of the best we can, good place for now.
This is a lot of.
Oh, no, and you know, and one thing I didn't want to do is I didn't want to put us in a situation where we were just ready to be somebody to file a lawsuit against us even. That's why, I really wanted to say, this is what you're going to do. I really did. And another community I know did that. I don't know where, we'll probably learn from them.
Am I going to know that we have a new pole?
Probably.
No, if it's in your front yard, you probably will.
Well, I noticed on corner trail, they got a bunch of new poles going up through there. And I thought that would be a real good example to explain to the people what that's going to look like.
And, yeah. And new poles, if they will co-locate on those new poles, then we'll never, you know, make a deal with Arkansas Valley. I think Arkansas Valley's on corner trail. That's, that's the ideal situation, is that so that they don't have to put up any new poles. One of the things that we have in here is, if you've read this, I believe we have it in here, is that if all the poles are on one side of the road, wireless providers, you don't cross the road and start putting up a bunch of new poles over here on this side of the road. Let's follow, follow the same line of poles over here where we're at. At least, let's try to keep it everything on one side. And there's things where we've tried to put it where the, stay close to a property line so that you're not up in the middle of the house blocking a bedroom window, maybe blocking some other views or business of some residential properties. These are some of the things that I did not see from all the other ordinances and from some of the comments that were made by wireless providers. They didn't complain about those sections, so I said, they didn't complain about them there, so let's put them in our ordinance. But if you see, but you will see, some of these poles could be very noticeable. They could be, some of them may not be. So, we just have to wait, wait to see.
Well, I enjoyed what you had to say, I just don't understand it. Maybe I'm not supposed to.
Well, no, I understand, I understand. And this is going to be, and when you say this, this is going to be, I expect this to be a very dynamic issue in that it's, you know, as things, wireless providers begin installing around the state and in different communities, and as they start trying to comply with different local laws and the state law, and the local communities start trying to regulate, I think we're going to see a potential for perhaps some additional legislation or some, or something to come down that might cause us to want to either add to our ordinance or remove something from our ordinance. But anyway, it's something we're going to be saying.
I still don't understand. What do you anticipate after September 1st or September 2nd? Do you anticipate kind of a little bit of a boom when people try to put these in?
I know from one meeting I was in that AT&amp;T has a build program. They would not share us where it was, what they were going to do. That was a meeting I had with another community and AT&amp;T officials. So, they're ready, they're, they have some readiness. I don't know how much that's going to be. One of the things that, remember the slide that I pointed out there, one of the bullets in one of the slides was that they're going to potentially start putting these where they have problems. You know, right now, if they're in known areas where they are dropping signals or you're dropping a signal as you're driving or if you're at home or at your work, you've got too many people using data. It may be that they even want to have something in here in the downtown area, close to the downtown area for a big festival. You know, a lot of people are at football games or at schools. Schools use a lot of that, a lot of kids, a lot of this, this is the school itself. So, there's potential there for a lot of those, the kind of locations I see, there's a potential danger. But it may not, they may not have a problem now, the back pole cell towers may, yeah, have them for Van Buren. But I think we need to get ready just in case. For a micro cell.
Thank you. Appreciate it, all the hard work. Okay, we've got a few more motions tonight. I need a motion to adopt the ordinance as read. Motion, the second, would please call the roll.
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Councilmember Swain.
Aye.
Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Sparkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Nealan.
Aye.
Councilmember Petty.
Aye.
Now, I need a motion to pass the emergency clause.
Motion.
Second.
Motion, the second. Would the clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Councilmember Swain.
Aye.
Councilmember Wood. Councilmember Sparkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Nealan.
Aye.
Councilmember Petty.
Aye.
Eyes have it, I therefore declare the ordinance number. 1-0-2-0-9 passed. Next item on the agenda is an ordinance regarding the Van Buren Municipal Utilities Making Repairs to Wastewater Treatment Plant. Would the clerk please read the ordinance in its entirety?
Bidding enacted by the city council of the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, and ordinance to be entitled and ordinance authorizing the city of Van Buren Municipal Utilities to buy open competitive bidding and proceed with flood damage repairs at the city's Lee Creek Industrial Park Backard Wastewater Treatment Plant declaring an emergency. Whereas, the city of Van Buren's Lee Creek Industrial Park Backard Wastewater Treatment Plant sustained severe damages during the 2019 Arkansas River flood event. And whereas, during and immediately after the flood event, the Lee Creek Industrial Park Backard Wastewater Treatment Plant could not be operated, causing restroom facilities to be closed at three facilities. And whereas, the immediate repair of the Lee Creek Industrial Park Backard Wastewater Treatment Plant is necessary in order to maintain the proper flow of treatment of wastewater at the Lee Creek Industrial Park Backard Wastewater Treatment Plant. And whereas, as the inability to operate the Lee Creek Industrial Park Backard Wastewater Treatment Plant could cause adverse health effects and the city to be in non-compliance with the city's Arkansas Department of Environmental Quality, AVEQ, National Pollution, National Pollution Discharge Elimination System, MPDES permits. It is necessary to implement and complete repairs and return to complete operations as soon as possible. And whereas, after review and consideration, Hub's Construction was hired to complete the repairs and return the Lee Creek Industrial Park Backard Wastewater Treatment Plant to normal operations for the sum of $58,941.85. $58,941.85. And whereas, it would be impractical and unreasonable to bid this project at this stage. And the city needs to immediately begin construction of this project without any delays. And whereas, the city of Van Buren Municipal Utilities Commission, have by resolution, a copy of which is attached here too, recommended that the city council waive competitive bidding for cause of the urgent circumstances. And whereas, Section 14 S58 S303 of the Arkansas Code annotated provides that the government body by ordinance may violate the requirements of competitive bidding in exceptional situations where such procedure is deemed not feasible or practical. Now, therefore, ordained by the city council of the city of Van Buren, Arkansas, that's Section 1. The city council hereby requires a competitive bidding for the above described project as such a procedure is not deemed to be feasible or practical under circumstances. Section 2, the employment of a contract agreed to is deemed and found to be necessary for the immediate for device of health, safety and welfare of the city and of such emergency service declared. And this ordinance shall take effect and be in full force upon and after its passage and approval.
We have a motion to suspend the rolls and go to a third and final reading. Motion.
Second.
Second, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any thoughts? Eyes have it, therefore, we call the motion carried. Ordinance by title for a second time.
And ordinance authorizing the city of Van Buren Municipal Utilities to waive open competitive bidding and proceed with the flood damage repairs at the city's Lee Creek Industrial Park Backard Wastewater Treatment Plant declaring an emergency.
We have a motion to further suspend the rolls and go to a third and final reading.
Certainly.
Motion. Second, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Any thoughts? Eyes have it, therefore, we call the motion carried and ask for it to read the ordinance by title for a third and final reading.
And ordinance authorizing the city of Van Buren Municipal Utilities to waive open competitive bidding and proceed with the flood damage repairs at the city's Lee Creek Industrial Park Backard Wastewater Treatment Plant declaring an emergency.
Steve, you have anything else?
No, it's just repercussions of our flood. That's, we've still got a couple of other facilities, we're still getting back up and running. But one, we changed order into an existing project. Some of the other ones didn't come up to the $35,000 state procurement regulation. So, we're still working on them.
Just a question, and I obviously have a lot of problem with it, but do we, most of the time we do bidding and that's why we rarely see something like this come across our desk?
Yes. I will say that the. Yes, that's, that's, and I will say that, uh, the commission, the utilities commission is, we're drafting and planning for two thousand twenty to implement, and it's become quite common in other municipalities, and on call, emergency repair contract, so you don't have to do this, so that, that state threshold of thirty-five thousand dollars, when you're dealing with water insurance utilities, that doesn't, you know, I, I can't hardly get a contractor out there with a track over and do anything for that, so, but yes, that's correct.
Will any relief from, of the flood insurance take care of that?
Um, the utilities department, um, insurance does not, it was not covered under the flood insurance. Now, we are anticipating a seventy-five percent FEMA reimbursement. So, right now, I think we're, um, submitting total around two hundred and fifty thousand or so to, to FEMA just for the water insurance utilities. So, we, we anticipate seventy-five percent reimbursement for any of this.
Very good. We have a motion to adopt the resolution is read.
Motion. Second.
Will clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Councilmember Swain.
Aye.
Councilmember Wood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sparkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Nealan.
Aye.
Councilmember Petty.
Aye.
And we have an emergency clause here as well, so we need a motion. Will clerk please call the roll?
Councilmember Dodson.
Aye.
Councilmember Swain.
Aye.
Councilmember Wood.
Aye.
Councilmember Sparkman.
Aye.
Councilmember Nealan.
Aye.
Councilmember Petty.
Aye.
I have, the eyes have it, therefore declare the ordinance number.
One one dash two zero one nine.
One one dash two zero one nine, pass. Next on the agenda is the financial report, you have the copies of the report, will clerk please read your amount?
One million eight hundred twenty-three thousand seven hundred ninety-four dollars and ninety cents.
I have a question. Generally, uh, our amount is like one point three million. Why is this so much inflated this time?
I think I'll go back and look at it, um, yeah, I, I don't know. Looks like two hundred forty thousand from the scores, we're solving program, my big check.
I just know we're usually around one point three million at this time.
Uh, motion played, please.
Second.
All in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Opposed? You call the motion carried? Yeah, I'll, I'll look into that. Under boards and commissions, we have, um, Mr. Mason Shirey being, uh, appointed to the housing authority board. We have a motion to refer to appointing Mr. Shirey.
Have we ever seen this guy?
He is actually on playing commission.
Is he in the playing commission?
He's on the chamber of commerce as well.
He's, he's been here a few times actually.
Okay.
I've heard a lot of them never seen.
Drive the motion.
Certainly. Second.
Motion is second, all in favor of the motion?
Aye.
Play the motion carried. Next, we have the department reports, you have copies of the reports from various departments, any questions? None of the clerk of those filed, as submitted. We're having a, John Pope's here, I, I just wanted to mention a couple of things, uh, coming up in September. One, we, we're having a new partnership with Keep Van Buren Beautiful Police Department. It's an effort to be consistent in our economic development plan that was passed a few years ago, and we're continuing to readdress that. And that is, the number one priority is addressing the appearance, making sure that the city looks as great as it can. And so, this, this partnership here is, is an effort to clean up litter. We have a lot of roadside litter, especially because of the major thoroughfares that we have where our state and federal highways, and a lot of tourists, a lot of travelers come in and out of Van Buren. Although we've been picking up litter at a great rate, it's still an effort that we need to improve and really shine a light on here. Uh, just a couple of other things, but essentially what we're gonna be doing is, um, raising awareness about litter reporting hotline, which you may or may not have known about. It's a message about the Arkansas Department of Transportation and Keep Arkansas Beautiful. And so, we're, we're wanting to make sure people call that number when they see litter. And then also, the police department will be, um, designating the entire month of September for increased daytime patrol surveillance to target litter violators on those major thoroughfares. The goal isn't to issue citations, but it's just to, to raise awareness and let law-abiding citizens and those who are littering know that this is a problem that, that we want to try to, um, to improve.
So, is a cigarette thrown out of a window littering?
John, what's the answer to that?
Most definitely.
Well, I know what I think it is, I'm just saying.
Cigarette littering is the most littered, oh, not only in Van Buren, State of Arkansas, in America, in the world.
And you, I think you need to give it numbers of how many you all picked up at times.
Well, we haven't really counted this recently, but, uh, will you finish, Mayor? Thank you for giving my report, what he said. Let me back up just a little bit, if I might, and, and bring us up to date on why we wanna do this. Now, Keep Arkansas Beautiful, we became an affiliate of Keep Arkansas Beautiful and Keep America Beautiful thirteen years ago. At that particular time, among the twenty-five page forms we had to fill out to become an affiliate, what we had to do was a community appearance index. And what that is simply is you get four people in a van, you mark out the area, which Ernie Schimmel, who was our, the gentleman who handled this particular, uh, drive-through through the city, uh, we scored thirty different areas in the city. Residential, the state highways, the parks, and also, um, just general neighborhoods and industrial park. Keep America Beautiful requires us to do this on a yearly basis, so that we can tell whether or not we're making improvements. They score between one and four. Never known why they wanted to do one and four, that's the way they've always done it. You can score something one point five or whatever. And we would start off on a particular area, and Ernie would say, okay, scored. And we would all score that particular area, and it could be a one, or a two, or a three, or a four. A four was basically, basically considered a dump site. And then, at the end of those, at the end of the day, it took about three hours to do this. And we would add all the scores up, divide by four, and we would determine what our score was for the city. When we first started off thirteen years ago, we came in at a three point two five. By Keep America Beautiful standard, that is a major cleanup to require cleanup to the city. Subsequently, through partnerships with the city and the chamber, and other businesses in our city, and an enhanced pride that has taken place over the years in our city, we have consistently brought that down to, I almost wanna say drumroll. The last three years, we have been at one point two five, one point five oh, and one point two five. Which means through our programs, we have cut the visible litter in our city in half. Now, the Arkansas Highway Police and the Arkansas Keep Arkansas Beautiful State Commission have a litter hotline. And in my opinion, it is terribly underutilized. The number is eight six six eight one 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 two two two. And for those of you that may remember this, there was a jingle on that, and there was a cartoon that went through it, or went through that process, very well done. And it's on our Keep Van Buren Beautiful website, if you care, or Facebook page, if you care to look at it. Basically, it's very simple, and I've demonstrated this with the mayor recently, and also with Sergeant Weir, the Van Buren Police Department. And I won't say exactly what you do, but, cause if I say, S I R I, call the litter hotline, then my phone's gonna call the litter hotline, I don't want it to do that. But if you put the litter hotline number, eight six six one one eight one 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 two 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 in your phone and put it in as the litter hotline, then all you've gotta do is say, call the litter hotline. They're gonna answer it, and it takes, it takes less than a minute. They're going to ask you, what was the license plate number of the vehicle that you saw litter? Give a description of the vehicle, whether it was an SUV, whether it was a Chevy Impala, or whatever. What was littered? What is the location? And whether it was the driver's side or the other side? The whole process takes less than a minute. And what they do then is they compile this data over the course of the years, and they have, over the course of the year, this program's been in effect since two thousand and four. And there's been over eighty thousand calls that have gone on. But, on a weekly basis, like eighty. And I, I just, statewide, I just feel that that's underutilized, and this is a perfect opportunity. Nobody here is in favor of trash. This gives you, as the citizen of this particular community and the entire state, the opportunity to report litters. And it's underutilized, and I think we oughta try and enhance this particular opportunity to call in. Again, if you put it in your cell phone, it's very simple, and it's very easy to do. What we're trying to do, Keep America Beautiful uses a phrase called raise awareness. We're trying to raise awareness to this litter hotline, and we're also trying to get people to recognize, which most of us do, littering is not a good thing for our community. We've made a considerable effort, um, along with the city, to enhance our downtown area. It greatly improved over the years. I also want to mention that we are the only ones that are doing this. And what I mean by we, I mean the city, the police department, Keep Van Buren Beautiful. This is not something that Keep Arkansas Beautiful has indicated to us that we should do. This is not something that RDOT, our Arkansas Department of Transportation has indicated this is something we should do. As, as a result of this idea that I came up with recently, I talked to Chad Adams, which is the state highway engineer for this particular area, told him what we were going to do. He was all in favor of it. I discussed it with our director of Keep Arkansas Beautiful, and he was all in favor of it. And I also talked to the state highway commissioner over in Fort Smith for this particular area. Everybody's in favor of it. So, I, I want us to be a leader in this particular area. And as the mayor indicated, we have a unique situation here where our neighborhoods, practically all the time are at once, with Fayetteville Road and the major highways and the interstate that we have here, the on and off ramps, they need to be improved. And I think usage of this hot litter hotline, we could really improve the, uh, appearance of our city and reduce the litter.
Appreciate it. John, would you repeat that phone number one more time, please?
Eight six six eight one 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 two two two. There's even a website for this, uh, the Arkansas State Police have a, have a website for it. And when they get this call, what they do then, if the license plate matches the description of the vehicle, they then send out a letter from the state police officer and the director of Keep, uh, Keep Arkansas Beautiful, stating that on this particular date, you observed throwing litter out, litter in the back of your vehicle, or something of that nature. And, uh, there's a phone number on there that the person who receives the letter can actually call. And occasionally, we'll get somebody who will actually call in and apologize for doing this. Sometimes we get in somebody who will say, well, I didn't do that. But the whole intent of this is just to try and improve our community. And I, I really thank the mayor and the chief for, for working with us on this, so, thank you.
Anything else from the public, or?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am.
I've been crossing property on entry, and there's just a whole lot of cigarette butts going out. Is that in every school?
No.
And it's on my side, or the side my property goes to, because the other side, so they don't throw it there. They throw it there in, they're thinking of the dirt, but sometimes within the grass, some piles are not in the grass pile. But, not to my fault.
Thanks for letting us know. Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn.
Second.
We have time to go to the end.
Second, all in favor?